Penny, are you all squared away?
So I can see you. Cool.
You all set now?
I think so. My PC is buffering for some reason. So but I can see people, but it's buffering. So we'll just see what happens.
Okay, everybody else ready to go? All right, welcome to the Monday, September 14th meeting of the Cape Elizabeth Town Council. Can we get the roll call from town clerk, please?
Chairman Adams, Counselor Devereaux.
Here.
Counselor Gabrielson. Counselor Garvin.
Here.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan.
Here.
Counselor Penelope Jordan.
Yeah.
Counselor Straw.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Deb. Would you all please join into the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Do any counselors have anything that they wish to report at this time?
I do.
Go ahead, Penny.
I just want to, because I know we're still getting a lot of correspondence regarding short-term rentals, and I just want to make sure that people out there are aware of the Planning Board workshop regarding short-term rentals on September 22nd. And I think that I'm glad that people are still engaged in this process. And I think all perspectives need to be represented with the Planning Board as they work through that ordinance. And the other thing is the 2021 senior tax relief, making sure that everybody's aware of that. I mean, it means a lot at this point in time. So I know that a lot of correspondence around that. But the more we say, hopefully, the more people come participate.
Thank you, Penny, for both of those things. Anybody else have anything that they want to report on right now? Counsel Gabrielson?
I just wanted to give a quick update. Matt and I both attended the first meeting of the Metro Region Coalition in a while last week, and just wanted to let everybody know that a lot of the issues we've been following around housing choice are going to stay on the agenda for that group. And also, I was pleased that we've added some items to the work plan looking at responses to regional responses around COVID, as well as some of the work that we've been doing around racial equity and trying to see what opportunities there may be for learning with other communities in the region. So no specifics as of yet, but let you know that that's on the agenda with other communities as well.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for Jeremy on that? Anybody else with anything to report on right now? Okay. We'll go on to the Finance Committee report, which I will deliver. So in the packet, we're the normal control and distribution reports. So hopefully, folks have had a chance to peruse those, as well as the dashboard that Matt provided. I note, Matt, and I don't know if you want to give any other color commentary that, you know, in all of the key revenue and expenditure areas that we focus on with the dashboard, we're running extremely close to forecast, which I find both encouraging and just interesting from a budgeting perspective. So I know also, I'll touch on that the work of the annual audit has been done. And so our K O, our auditor, will be working on compiling that to deliver to us as a report later on this fall, but that they were in and, you know, doing their annual work and meeting with all the key stakeholders involved in that process, both on the municipal and school side. So look forward to that upcoming. Matt, was there anything else you wanted to just add, though, from your perspective on the dashboard?
If I could, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to. In particular, is the building permit side of the equation, which is almost double to where we were at this point last year. Speaking with Code Officer Ben McDougall about this, and he, when I was crafting the dashboard at the end of the week, I said, Ben, you know, have you felt busy lately? Because based on the numbers, you are extremely busy. And building seems to continue in a very strong sector from the revenue side, where at this point in time, we're almost $51,000 in revenue. At this point, last year, we were at $28,000 in revenue. So we're tracking about 10.2% greater than we were at this point. And so that's what we saw this spring, as far as building permit activity continues through the summer and going into the fall. So that's encouraging, at least from a dollars and cents standpoint, as well as our excise taxes. And with, you know, there was some concern with our operations being somewhat restricted by appointment only, but seems to be folks are moving along with that extremely well. And our staff is really performing a lot of work to keep and helps residents as far as registering their cars. And it shows in our excise tax revenue, which is about 2% greater than we were at this point last year as well. So speaking with other managers in the region, there has been and does continue to be a strong sector is the new car sales. Many communities are finding that they do have a lot of new registrations that are taking place. So I think that's reflecting in our excise registration. And then revenue sharing as well, as you know, painfully so, that we did go through two different budgets this past spring. And one of the big rewrites on that was our anticipated revenue from revenue sharing through the state. That seemed to have been a very good decision, as we're tracking where we should be. And we're looking to be on course where we're anticipating to be at this point last year. So as you see, last year, we were at 18.4%, and this year, we're at 17.8%. So we're, based on the calendar, at least, we should be tracking what our anticipated revenues, if not exceeding it by a little bit of years, and at least based on the early trend. And then finally, our pay and display revenue is catching up quickly with where we should have been at this point. Looking at the week-on-week revenues as they do come in, we've seen a steady increase as traffic, quite frankly, has increased at the park. So we did get through a couple of busy holiday weekends and the end of the summer. So but it's been, we've been blessed with good weather. And I think that has come about with people taking advantage of coming to the park. So that's helped us recover where we started off a little weakly there. So all in all, we're looking at good things in our expenditures. I was talking with staff, well, with department heads today. And they've done a good job trying to, you know, continue being frugal when it comes to our expenditures to make sure that we do stay in line with where we should be for the year. And it's reflected, as you see, through many of our other lines. The one area that is significantly different from last year was on diesel and gasoline, where we were at $4,000 bucks last year. Basically, spend now we're at 13, but that comes down with the timing of when our purchases took place. We're not using a great deal, much more fuel. It just happens to be that the invoice is paid during that month, where it might have shown up next month. So but all in all, we're in decent shape, and I'm very encouraged at this point as we go into the second quarter.
Matt, quick question on the state revenue side. I know that I saw in the last week or two, you know, some information coming out of the governor's office around, you know, how she was looking, and she and her staff are looking to close the forecasted gap. Are you hearing anything? I haven't seen a ton, other than, you know, some of the newsletter kind of stuff that circulates our way from the municipal association. But what are you and sort of other managers hearing about the more forward-looking projections on revenue sharing?
Well, I think the big thing was, you know, back when they came out with their original forecast in March, they had us at about $860,000. And that's when, you know, when things started to hit, and it's when we made, you know, to be frank, a scientific estimate as to try to get down to where we needed to be. And so we've built that into where we should be. I think the state is looking to shore up their budget by coming, by not filling open positions. And they have multiple lines of revenue that, quite frankly, we don't have to concern ourselves with. I know it sounds funny. Our budgets are just structured differently, and they're coming into a next legislative session. So they're finishing up their one budget, and they have to start crafting the next one with the new legislature seats. So I think they need to do some housekeeping on their end. But as far as the formula, that what, how they advance and distribute revenue sharing, we have not heard anything as far as changing the percentages as to how they distribute that income that does come in. So but I do think it was very wise to have done what we did earlier in the spring budget. So that seems to have been a good point.
Okay, are there other questions from Matt or myself on the finance report? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to citizen opportunity for items that are not on tonight's agenda. And in addition to the council, there's 11 folks from the public, now 12 currently, joining us over the Zoom meeting. So if there are any members of the public that wish to speak at this time, please use the raise hand function in Zoom, which depending if you're on a desktop or phone or tablet, might either be in the bottom corner or in the upper more three dots area. But so if anybody has a question, please raise your hand, and you'll be recognized to speak. Not seeing any hands going up. All right, seeing none. Matt, would you please give us your manager's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be very happy to. First, full disclosure, I did not ask Counselor Penny Jordan to tee up what I'm about to start speaking about. Just happens to be coincidence. But wanted to take the opportunity to remind folks that on the town's website, there is currently an article relating to the Senior Citizen Tax Relief Program, letting people know that the applications are now available. Tax assessor last week mailed out 200 application packets across the town to prior recipients and the other people who have requested applications, but did not receive them last year due to missing the deadline or for other reasons, but have or have become knowledgeable of it. So we've reached out to those folks and made sure that they have received the applications. The program has a maximum benefit of $500 for Cape Elizabeth residents 65 years or older and have lived in their home for 10 years and either own or rent. And they have an annual household of $60,000, household income of $60,000 or less. And the applications, as I said, are available on the town's website, or you can call 799-1619, and they would be happy to take your information and mail a packet to you as well. So last year, we had, the first year, I think Clint said, we had 130 participants. And then this most recent year, we had 165. So it's growing, which is a good thing. And I think this year, the amount that we have set aside is $85,000 currently in the budget. So we should be, we should be in good shape as far as meeting the need. But we do want those who are eligible, please come forward, and we'd be happy to help you fill them out as well. So stand by for future updates as the program advances. The recycling center fees have resumed on September 8th. Now, fees for disposal of leaf and yard waste, brush, and other demolition materials at the recycling center were suspended back in March due to concerns of the pandemic. This was primarily due to attempting to minimize exposure of staff and patrons. And over the past months, materials have been installed to provide protections such as Plexiglas shields and other personal protective equipment for staff. And now we are able to conduct transactions. That, in conjunction with the rule on mask wearing, has come down through the executive order. We feel that we can do that and provide that safely at this time. Public Works Director Jay Reynolds is working on a reopening plan for the swap shop and for returnable bottles. And I'm afraid I misspoke last month. I thought that we were going to be able to receive returnable bottles and cans. However, our partner firm we've been working with is experiencing staff shortages and is unable to handle the volume at this point in time. But we are exploring other options and should have a solution shortly. So as we receive updates, we will place those on the website and try to show the word, because I know there are a number of people who would like to donate their returnables. Finally, I have a really good news for the council, and I hope this will provide you some positive vibes, for lack of a better term. But Fire Chief Gleason provided me with a letter that he received of thanks to the Fire and Rescue Department that they received from a mother of a 35-year-old man who suffered a heart attack recently when visiting Cape Elizabeth. The town's paramedics and emergency medical technicians responded within five minutes of the call. That's not, you know, that was literally, the call started, and five minutes later, they were there. And they employed the towns, they have a device called a Lucas device, which is an auto CPR device, and which provided the treatment, which was essential in saving this young man's life. The chief and I wanted to thank the council for the support that you provide the department with equipment such as this, which made the difference between life and death on this day. It's great to be able to share a positive ending to what could have been a tragedy. But he received the nicest letter from this young man's mother, who's a selectman in the town that in the town that they live in. So I think she understands the job that the fire chief does and that our good people do. So but I thought that's a great story for the council. And so many times we hear bad news these days. It's good to hear good news. And chief just wanted me to share his appreciation for the support that the council has provided the department over the years. And, you know, this device, it does provide the CPR actions that is needed. That, you know, if you go on a call to have the rotation of folks who have to go through to do CPR, it gets exhausting. And to maintain that, you know, part of it was helped by the young man's fiance's mom knew CPR and provided some of that until he got there five minutes later. But great story, happy ending. So it's good to have a win, as the chief said. So that's my full report this evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
I think so. There any questions from that? Before we move on to the rest of the agenda, I just had a couple of things that I wanted to, I guess, tag on to Matt's report. Number one, in a similar bit of good news, just want to draw attention and extend the council's congratulations to School Resource Officer Dave Galvin, who this month is being honored by the Trauma Intervention Program of Portland and Main Behavioral Healthcare for his efforts and work, along with a number of other great frontline personnel that are, you know, really integral to helping in the behavioral health community in greater Portland. So want to recognize him and the great work that he's been doing there. I also want to note the passing of a couple of fellow capers. And the first is Helen Tarling, who passed away earlier this month, just shy of her 104th birthday. But a true caper, born on the farm, attended Bowery Beach School, and then left out her final days at the landing. And her family, I know, has deep roots in the community. And she will be missed, as will Jack Cnealy, who, those of us who go onto the website so frequently for meeting agendas and other information, will always see Jack's work. And we're sad to learn of his passing late last month. And for both of them and to their families, I extend the condolences of the council. And I know that we'll all remember them, remember them fondly. So with that, we'll move on to our regular agenda. And we'll start with item number 118-2020, General Assistance Appendices. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this?
Did you want to do the minutes first?
Oh, I will, thank you. I'm out of practice. Thank you, Penny. Before we get to that item, is there a motion for the minutes of the August 10th, 2020 meeting?
I move the minutes as presented.
Moved to approve by Counsel Gabrielson, seconded by Counsel Devereaux, as I hear, no, or Penny?
Yeah.
Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing no hands, can we have a roll call vote?
Counsel Devereaux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Protan Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Now we'll go to 118-2020, General Assistance Appendices. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing no hands raised. This is an annual agenda item that we have. The recommendation is that we set the, to a public hearing, the General Assistance Ordinance appendices A through H, and that that public hearing be at our next regular meeting on Wednesday, October 14th, 2020, at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Straw. Is there a second?
A second, a second.
Counsel Penny Jordan, any discussion?
I have a quick question. I'm just wondering, and Matt, what is the, on page 117 of the document, there's this redlined misconduct, and it seems kind of not related to the A through H. Can you explain to me how that's related to the overall appendices?
Give me just a moment to catch up with you, if I may. Counsel.
Go to 117.
Yeah, I'm scrolling there as we speak.
Huh?
Oh, the red lines would be the changes from last year to this year.
But what does that misconduct of employees have to do with the the general assistance tables?
If I may be granted a couple of weeks to do that and get the research, I can find out from MMA about what the changes are related to and be able to report back.
Yeah, I was just trying to draw the relationship. It didn't make sense to me.
It looks like there was a public law that changed in 2019 that maybe the difference there, because it may have been revised up above. Where you see at the bottom of, or on page, or under Appendix 1, where the crossout ends, you see at the bottom, it's like 1999, Chapter 464, subsection 2, new. And then you go down, scroll down a little bit. You've got a new public law, Chapter 125, Section 1. So I think what happened is that the legislature may have changed that law and revised it with a new law that was passed in 2019. And so they amended that language by striking out the old and inserting the new. The reason behind that, I can find out why that law section was changed. I'll just have to make a call to MMA to find out about it.
As I read it, I kind of understood the concept of why that employee misconduct. If you read it, you can understand what the changes represented. But my question is, what does that have to do with general assistance?
Yeah, I will find out that answer.
That's the question.
I'll have that ready for next month.
Okay.
That's a good one. Thank you for that.
Isn't that going to, but we're going to have a public hearing? Or potentially, will they have a public hearing on the general assistance proposal? You know, so anyway, you might need to know it before people go to a public hearing.
Yeah, I think it's a phone call away, so I'll call, get due for tomorrow at MMA.
Cool.
So the other thing I would, excuse me, the other thing I would ask in advance of the public hearing, I know certainly last year, and I can't remember, it might have been the year before, too, that there has been one of these appendices that has generated discussion. And, you know, a little bit further examination by the council, I think it was.
The GA maximums.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, so my request, just administratively, would be for anybody that has, you know, a perspective on that, or if you'd like, that come, you know, come with a point of view on that or a recommendation to be put forward. So.
Okay. I can follow up on that as well with our GA administrator.
So, well, and counselors, too. I know, I think what I'm saying is that if folks are looking to deviate or do something different, put some thought into what that might be and potentially, you know, have a draft proposal. So.
I think Valerie.
Yeah, I mean, I know she's the one that's brought this up.
And she. She proposed changes last year, so we could go back to those minutes.
Yep, and I'll be happy to circle up with her, too, just to raise her awareness to this coming back around. But because I just remember, logistically, us being sort of held up a little bit by having to wait and redraft and all that kind of stuff. So any other discussion than on this item or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion on the table to refer this to a public hearing on October 14th? Deb, could you give us a roll call, please?
Counsel Devereaux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 119-2020 is the Appointments Committee Recommendations to the New Ad-Hoc Civil Rights Committee. Is there anybody from the public, now up to about 13 folks, that would like to speak on this item? So please raise your hand now. I don't see any hands raised. So I'm going to offer Counsel Devereaux, Chair of the Appointments Committee, the opportunity to introduce this item.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to to thank everyone, all of the applicants. We had 17 applicants for seven positions. Everyone was exceptional. It's such an honor to be part of a community that has people who are so talented and willing to give their time. So thank you. We, it wasn't an easy decision. We, like I said, we had 17 fabulous applicants. So as you can see, do you want me to read off the names of the people?
Sure, thank you.
So Keela Austin Griffin, Diraj Karay, Kimberly Monahan, Paul Seidman, Jim Sparks, Melanie Thomas, Rafina Young. And then we have Miriam Eschlevanos, who's a student sophomore at Cape Elizabeth High School, who will be our student representative. And I want to disclose that I know Jim Sparks' wife and daughter through speech and debate. I don't know that I'd ever met Jim Sparks before. And I am acquainted with Paul Seidman, Melanie Thomas, and Rafina Young, the other people I had never met before. So I just want to let everyone know that. I don't feel that my being acquainted with those people or Jim Sparks' wife and daughter led to any bias or inability to be fair in this process. These are the people that we have chosen, and we're very excited about this new ad hoc committee.
Okay, is there a motion?
I so moved.
Counsel Devereaux moves to approve the recommendations, the Appointments Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Penny Jordan. Any discussion? Counsel Straw? I assume one of you wants to put your name forward as the town council liaison as well. We may as well accomplish that at the same time.
I would like to put my name forward.
Do we want to handle that as, do we need a motion on that? And if so, do we want to do that separately or?
Separate.
It may be good to do two separate motions, but.
Okay, why don't we, yeah, why don't we vote on this? And then we'll have that as a separate motion. And I just have a quick question. So you mentioned Miriam as the student, one of the student representatives. Looking at the charge, it was up to two students. Was there? were there not other students interested or?
We, we just had the one who applied, so there's still a vacancy for the other student. My guess is since school hadn't started yet, that a lot of kids weren't aware of it.
Fair enough. Other questions, discussion? I'll just say thank you to all the people who expressed an interest and thank you for those who are offering to volunteer their time and talent on this group. Thank you to the Appointments Committee for your work in putting together the recommendation. And with no further discussion or questions, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Council Deveraux?
Yes.
Council Gabrielson?
Yes.
Council Caitlin Jordan? Council Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Council Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. So related to that, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Council Deveraux as the representative, non-voting ex officio member from the council. Is there a motion to that effect? So moved. Council Straw, is there a second?
I'll second.
That's your job to that, Penny. Anyone else interested? Otherwise, sounds great to me. You've got free time for the next couple of months.
No, thanks.
Anybody else? Valerie, thank you very much for your interest and I think, I think you'll do great on this and I appreciate your willingness to do it. With that, a roll call vote, please, Deb.
Council Deveraux?
Yes.
Council Gabrielson?
Yes.
Council Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Council Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Council Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Your motion carries.
Thank you very much. The next item is item number 120-2020, the Willowbrook Calvert Grant. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak about this item? Seeing none. I know that in our packet, we were provided a memo from Town Planner Maureen O'Meara. She's also joining us this evening and I see that her mic is open. So Maureen, would you, for the benefit of the meeting, give us a little bit of an introduction on this item, please?
Sure, thank you very much. So I think pretty much all of you saw the culvert study that was done last year and I was able to present it with Bob Mally and our winner of the 16 culverts in Cape Elizabeth at the worst culvert was Willowbrook. And we are going after some grant money that we have never tried to go after before. I've had a lot of help from different people. And I just want to make sure it's clear that these are some big numbers I'm showing you, but some of them are really optional. So there's $88,000 in there that really is an optional placeholder. Because we're going after a grant that is focused on environmental protection, on restoring wetlands that have been degraded or maybe damaged because we have a constrained wetland that's the culvert that's not allowing tidal waters to flow. We're spending some money to do a tidal study. And if the tidal study tells us that the proposed culvert that we have is not correctly sized, the 88,000 is to buy the next one up. So we're hoping that we've, we've selected the right amount, but we are doing some very careful work with the tidal study. Also, one of the requirements of this grant is you have to do six years worth of monitoring. So we would go in before the work is done and do some studies on tidal levels. And then we would be doing work five years after, once a year, to look at what was going on as that tidal constriction is resolved. So I just want to recognize a great, great help from Jake Amen from ANWR, from Steve Harding and Shane Kelly. And there, there's some other folks out there that were really throwing me a lifeline and it was very, very helpful. And we have a big interview with this in early November, hoping to hear some good news around Thanksgiving.
Great. Thank you very much for the details and context there. So if there are no questions at this time for Maureen, would somebody like to make a motion to authorize the pursuit of the grant application?
So moved.
Moved by Council Gabrielson, is there a second?
Second.
Council Deveraux, any discussion? Maureen, these are always my favorite agenda items that you bring to us when you're digging for cash. Happy to see you, happy to see you bring this forward and I hope we'll cross our fingers that it comes through. 20% of the project price would be great. So seeing no other discussion, roll call vote, please, Deb.
Council Deveraux?
Yes.
Council Gabrielson?
Yes.
Council Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Council Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Council Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Perfect. Next item is number 121-2020. To refer to the Ordinance Committee non-commercial use of the boat launch near the entrance to Kettle Cove at the end of Crescent Beach. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? I don't see any hands raised. So Matt, can you give us an introduction on this? Turn over to you.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Mora raised his hands just as you were transitioning over. I just wanted to make sure he had the opportunity.
Fair enough. Yep. Jim, go ahead. Your name and address, if you don't mind, please, before your comments. Go ahead, Jim. We got you, Jim. Go ahead.
May also be preemptive to the next item on the agenda.
Hey, Jim, are you there? Did you want to speak on the Kettle Cove boat launch? All right, why don't we? Why don't we pause his mic then for a minute? And, yeah.
I'll set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so go ahead, Matt. Why don't you give us an introduction? And if Jim Moore, if you do in fact want to speak on this item after Matt gives us the introduction, I'd be happy to come back to you if you still wanted to talk about this. So go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. So as stated in my memo, over the course of the summer season, with all public spaces, but specific on the coastal, coastal area, we saw incredible increase in in use, quite frankly, in traffic. But, and one of the areas that found it was also the, what we had always thought it was the non-commercial access point into Kettle Cove, run to the Crescent Beach end of Kettle Cove, which is not, not the commercial area, which is currently the, the large boat launch that's down there. It says commercial fishermen only. So doing some research into that and reading about it, found that sections 13-3-9 and 13-2-4 in, in our ordinances show that that area is actually supposed to be restricted to commercial use only, specifically for launching a watercraft or commercial fishing activities. That is about as opposite of what it has traditionally been used for over the past. You know, speaking with Ed Hunt, who's worked for the town and the police department for a good many years, would be a nice way to put it, but he has experience with remembering with Chief Pickering initially came forward with crafting this beach access permit language. What we found was, you know, a couple of different things taking place. People, A, were getting the beach access pass, making the representation that they were going to be launching a boat onto the, onto the beach and then, and then leaving thereafter. Found that they actually weren't launching a boat. They were going down and parking on the beach. So we, that, that had to increase our patrols as we went through the summer. But it was, it was a stretch because, you know, all these places had a lot of, you know, a lot of pressure on them. So park staff had a hard time trying to respond as well as the PD, but once we were knowledgeable of it, we increased our patrols. But then reading the ordinance found that, okay, it says commercial only, but it's been traditionally used. And even the Harbors Committee with their work acknowledged that it was primarily the non-commercial access point. Also, as you recall, we've, we've submitted a planning grant that we received to help us try to improve that in the future. In the spring, we'll be looking to get a land and water conservation grant to help us construct an improved access point. But in the intervening time period, we'd like to see if we could get the conflict in the ordinance with the actual activities back in alignment, I guess. And that's why we brought this forward to try to see if the council could refer that to the ordinance committee. So then we could get that corrected or decide what we want further action to be.
All right. Thank you very much, Matt. I'll go back to see if Jim Moore wants to speak on this issue. And if not, then we'll move on to motion and discussion. Jim, your mic is back open. If you wanted to speak about this item.
Okay, can you hear me?
We got you loud and clear, Jim. Your name and address, if you don't mind, please.
Okay, yeah, Jim Moore, 5 Wambach Grove. I am in favor of a potential ordinance change for non-commercial use of the beach launch, providing a recreational launch separate from commercial launch was discussed in the Harbors Committee with recommendations in 2018. This change appears to be in line with the Harbors Committee recommendations. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Jim. Is there anybody else from the public that wanted to speak about this? Seeing none. Is there a motion from anybody on the council?
I move that we send this to the ordinance committee review.
Moved by Council Gabrielson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Penny Jordan, any discussion? Council Straw. So I think I understand this, but it isn't changing the existing commercial launch to allow non-commercial launching there, but instead fixing the ordinance so that we're traditionally, the non-commercial craft have launched to allow it to continue to occur in that non-commercial location. Is that right?
Yes, that's, that's the desire is to, yeah, get the, the ordinance to reflect reality and, and keep the peace among the fishermen and the non-commercial users.
Got it. And I just have to say, I find this incredibly depressing that, that there was any abuse of how we had things up and that, that just stinks for people to be coming up with ways to park on the beach when they're not. Anyway, I won't go there. But yeah, it sounds good to me.
Thank you, Council Straw.
Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none. Could we call a question?
Council Deveraux?
Yes.
Council Gabrielson?
Yes.
Council Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Council Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Council Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number 122-2020. To refer to workshop, further discussion, paper streets. Coming out of most recent mainstream judicial court decision. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item? I see no hands raised. Oh, there's, I need to pet it. Anita, if you wouldn't mind with your name and address before your comments, please. And I'll open up your mic in just a second. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
We've got you. Thank you very much.
Eight Catan Road. I want to thank the town council for its efforts today regarding the Surfside Atlantic Place Paper Street lawsuit. After all the time and money that went into that effort, now's the time to move forward and finally accept these paper streets or street. This can has been kicked down the road for far too long. I would ask the town council to finish the job that the community has so clearly supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pettit. Is there any other public comment at this time? See no other hands raised. So seeing none. So again, this item is before us tonight as a result of recent court decision received by the council in town. The proposed order tonight is to set to a workshop at our Wednesday, October 7th meeting, further discussion on potential next steps. Is there a motion? Moved by Council Deveraux, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Penny Jordan, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Council Deveraux?
Yes.
Council Gabrielson?
Yes.
Council Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Council Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Council Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, next up is item number 123-2020, parking on the town farm parcel. Is there anybody from the public that wants to talk about this item? I see no hands raised. Matt, this looks similar to the Kettle Cove item about reconciling current use to ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the beauties of the pandemic is you have opportunities to read items in the ordinances that you might not have had the opportunity to read over, over many years. This was one of those. I actually came to mind with a conversation with a local contractor who wanted to donate time and materials to improve the the small parking area because he'd noticed multiple times over the years, cars being extracted out by tow trucks as they were buried in the mud. Because it does get very soft and muddy during the wet season. Over the past 20 years at least, folks have been parking on the parcel in a very small area that must have organically come about as far as developing as a small parking area for folks who go and walk and explore the, explore the town farm parcel. They walked it off there. It's one of our off-leash areas. We do have parking further up the street, but folks generally tend to at least, you know, anywhere from one to six cars generally park in there when they explore the area. But then coming back to talk to Ben McDougall, our code officer about saying, I'd like to explore this and see if there's something we could bring to the council for action. He said, let me check the ordinance and came back and said, well, it says right here, no parking on the town farm parcel. And so much to all of our surprise, that was the language. So as you noticed on the, I also included a a copy of the current ordinance that we have, looking to have a small area that you might have noticed with the little map that I included as well. Plus, we have parking in that area specifically defined. You know, we could find a way to, to say, you know, no other area to have it, but this seems to have worked for quite a long time. But yet it's completely in violation of the ordinance. So I, I would venture a guess that many of the council did not know that that was not a permitted use when you saw cars there on your way back and forth to the recycling center or that part of town. But, uh, but it, it does exist that way. So that's why I brought that forward to council to see if, if the ordinance committee, and then if they decide to go forward with it, this would also have to be referred to the planning board as well, because it would be a revision of the, of the, of the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Is there anybody from the council that would like to make a motion?
I will.
Go ahead.
Okay, I move that we refer this item to the ordinance committee in order to assess the parking at the town farm, the poor farm, sorry. And to develop a recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Council Jordan, second by Council Straw, any discussion? Seeing none. Deb, could you call a vote, please?
Sorry, I, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
So I guess one thought that I have on this is there's also a trail misalignment here. The, the trail connector that goes, comes from the Gulf Crest property over by the cross-country ski trails comes out probably 400 feet up the road. You have to walk on the shoulder. If we're looking at, at amending the
If we're looking at amending the ordinance anyway, I wonder if it's also not worth looking at where the parking is located. I mean, I suppose you could build a trail connector just as easily, but given how much is on ordinance committee's plate right now, I almost wonder if referring this to conservation committee for a recommendation that would include the ordinance change and also give them an opportunity to look at where this parking should best be located might not be a better I find to recommend it to ordinance. I just wanted to, well, we've got the opportunity to raise it.
It sounds like either way, the ordinance needs to change no matter where it's located. I don't think the ordinance specifically, correct me if I'm wrong, that calls out the location, just that it's not permitted on the property, right?
Right, just that yes, it's not permitted, period.
Yeah. And so because of the longer process that would be involved in, as Matt just said, getting the ordinance updated, inclusive of public hearing and everything, referral to the planning board and the like, I think it probably makes sense to get that started. Regardless, it's not to say that these things can't happen on a parallel path, but it also just, you know, bring the current conditions better in line with the regulations then too. Council Jordan?
There's nothing to say that the ordinance committee wouldn't consult with the Conservation Commission on their thoughts around the parking. So could be done in concert, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Council Straw?
And out of curiosity, Jeremy, the the area potentially that you're referring to is that's, and I don't know where the boundaries are of the the Town Farm. Is that then outside of the boundaries of the Town Farm? Do you know, or?
No, unfortunately. And I only know it because I come up, come out there with, not having known you weren't supposed to park skiing. And I always, I always debate whether or not I should put my skis back on and ski through the field on the road.
I have a completely tangential question to this item, but it is related. And that is, Matt, do you, I know that, I don't think this year, and I don't think last year either, that field has been being actively hanged like it was for a number of years. And I just don't, I didn't know if you or either Councilors Jordan knew sort of what the current status is.
It should be here in the near term. Usually they wait until after the monarch butterflies have finished their, finished their business for a better term. And so I did speak with Jay Reynolds about that a week and a half or so ago about it, said, you know, the field over there, and he said, yep, it's on my schedule. Bob told me. So, but it is scheduled to be done this, I think, latter part of this month.
And again, maybe for either Penny or Caitlin to answer, but is there any other active interest in taking over that hanging operation or that you're aware of at all or no? Okay.
I think it's because they have to wait so long.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It makes sense.
It's about the monarch butterfly.
Yeah. Well, you know, if I may, Mr. Chairman, we have received emails about concerns about that during my tenure as manager for concerns about that as far as that management and but we were a little early, I think, my second year as manager, and it was pointed out to Bob. And so we do wait a little bit, a little bit later, but but I understand your point.
Any other discussion? All right, now I forgot to read the rule.
Council Deveraux?
Yes.
Council Gabrielson?
Yes.
Council Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Council Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Council Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number 124-2020, the annual municipal election warrant. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? And we're down to eight attendees in the public right now. I see no hands raised. Deb, would you please give us an introduction on this item, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure, I'd be happy to. The election warrant is before you for the municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 3rd. It will be held along with the general election. It calls for two members of the town council, two members of the school board, both are all for three-year terms. And we also have a member of the Portland Water District Board of Trustees. We share a representative with the city of South Portland. That is a five-year term. And again, election on Tuesday, November 3rd. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the gymnasium. Chairman Garvin, I have some information as well. I don't know if you want me to do that after the vote or whenever, but
No, I know that, you talked to Matt, we had talked about using this time to talk a little bit more broadly about election procedure and status of absentee ballots and all that kind of stuff. So I think this is a good time to just have you cover off on everything you've got, if you don't mind.
Okay, sure. I'd be happy to share with you what I have to this point. We are still working on details. This is a process. I think I'd like to start by saying that for many years Maine has had absentee balloting. When the pandemic hit, Maine did not have to create another voting procedure other than on the polls on election day. We've had the ability to do absentee ballots to be mailed to voters in return by mail and now by the availability of a Dropbox, which I'll get to in a minute. There's no reason to believe that these well-established absentee voting laws and protocols will not serve the citizens well in this election. We've had a lot of people concerned about that. And we are trying to assure them it's still us administering the election. There are laws that have been in for many years. Fortunately, on the fly, so to speak, Maine did not have to come up with laws, particularly, you know, for ballots, for absentee ballots to be mailed. So that's a very good thing. And administratively, we appreciate it. And I think the voters understand and appreciate it as well. Folks want to know when the ballots will be available, like any election. They come to us approximately 30 days before an election. I don't know what day we will receive the ballots. But again, it will be early October. It will take us a few days to process the ballots and get that first mailing out. We have over 3,300 requests already, which, you know, is going to be record-setting, I am sure. Just to give you an idea, in 2012 general election, we had 2,700 absentees. In November 2016, we had 3,800. In the election we just had two months ago, literally, there was almost 3,000. So again, we're on track for, you know, what we anticipate as record-setting absentee ballot totals. So if folks haven't requested their absentee ballot yet, and you wish to vote by absentee, not on election day, we would encourage you to get your request in as soon as you can. Right on the town's website, for folks that do have access to the website, there's a big yellow bar that runs across the homepage, request your absentee ballot now. You can download a request form and mail it in or fax it. You can go on the online request service that a lot of folks really enjoy that service because you do receive a confirmation. If either of those options don't work well for you, you can call my office and do a telephone request. So again, that availability is now, matter of fact, three months before an election, folks can start requesting ballots. So we would encourage folks, if they have not got their request in to do so Thursday, October 29th, Thursday before the election is the last day to mail out ballots. There is that deadline the Thursday prior. There's been a lot of questions on what are the options to return absentee ballots. Again, mail is still an option. There's no reason to believe that returning an absentee ballot by mail is still not a viable option. As always, with any mail we do, just make sure you leave enough time for the ballot to get back to us. We have ordered a Dropbox that should be in just as we send out that first mailing. Matt and I have been working with facilities to make sure the cement pad goes down, etc., ready for the Dropbox. It will be in the front of Town Hall here, actually on the corner. Before you get to the steps here at Town Hall, it will be red, white, and blue. It'll say ballot drop Cape Elizabeth. So it should be very well marked. That ballot box just cost us over $2,500 just for the box itself and the shipping. My understanding is the, will be a reimbursement from the state for perhaps up to $1,500. And we'll certainly pursue that, but we needed to get this ballot Dropbox ordered so that we could get it in in time. So so that again is on its way. All those return instructions and other instructions will be included with the ballot when the ballots are mailed. So we do a kind of step-by-step instructions for voters that will be included with our absentee ballot. We've had questions of, will my absentee ballot be counted? If you submit your absentee ballot, we receive it by the deadline before the polls close. If your envelope is signed, if you had somebody aid the ballot with you, the ballot, for instance, reading the ballot to you, as long as you have your witnesses' signatures, and again, that information is on the instructions. As long as your ballot is submitted properly before the deadline, your absentee ballot will be counted. The question has been raised, what is to present a voter from voting twice in Cape Elizabeth? When we receive a request, we log in the request. I will say that we are receiving two, three, and four requests from voters for this election. It's been very time-consuming to go through all the duplicates. We probably have about a third of the requests that we're receiving now are all duplicates. People are emailing and calling more than once, confirming again that we received their requests, which we had just confirmed with them maybe a week or so ago. They're calling again to make sure nothing's changed. So in terms of, again, voting twice, we'll log in the application. When the ballots come in, we'll mail them out. When the ballot comes back and everything is all right, we'll log in that the ballot has come back. There are instances where people get duplicates. In this last election, for instance, we had somebody that threw their ballot away. We had somebody that spilled coffee all over it. We had all different scenarios. So there are cases where a duplicate will be sent out. If someone's trying to try the system, so to speak, and says, oh, I'm just going to get two sets of mail and back, both back. When the first ballot comes back, we log that in. That's your ballot. That's the ballot that's going to be voted. If that second ballot, that duplicate happens to come back, that will be rejected as a duplicate. So one vote for folks. And I'm confident that that folks will not be voting twice in Cape Elizabeth. So, or, you know, anywhere for that matter. So that's the checks and balances, so, so to speak, that we have on that. It's amazing to see the number of new registrants that we have. If you look at it, we had an election last November, March, July, that were very heavily attended. We're still getting dozens of new registrants daily. So if anyone has moved to Cape Elizabeth, whether it's from another community in Maine or out of state, or if you've moved within Cape Elizabeth, a lot of people move within town. We need to send you a new voter registration card. We'll walk you through that process. If you haven't already, please contact my office and we will get you registered to vote. Again, either a new registrant to Cape Elizabeth or an address change or name change. Some folks have had name changes as well. Voter cards by mail or a third-party voter drive must be received in our office by close of business on Monday, October 19th. So it's been a very active and interesting lead-up or to this election. We still are waiting for some protocols from the governor's office. We will continue as we have information to post it on the town's website. For instance, when the absentee ballots come in, the sample ballots and so forth, those will be posted. And I guess I would just talk a little bit about about safety of staff. We are concerned about the potential public exposure that staff will have if folks don't avail themselves of absentee balloting. You know, having us mail one out to them, and again, they can return it by mail or the Dropbox. We are limited with a space here at Town Hall for any in-person voting, and we will be posting hours for that. We're still on lockdown. So we'll have to put somebody at the door to receive voters. And again, and I talked to Matt today, and with the staff there and the size of the chamber, only about three voters can be with inside the building at one time anyway. And, you know, when we do have a voter, then we have to wash everything down and so forth. So and we don't have, you know, lineup space outside of Town Hall and parking to accommodate literally hundreds of people, you know, here. On election day, it's similar. The governor has limited the number of people in the polling place to 50, and that includes election staff. So when you look at 25 or 30 of us and another 20 voters or so, that's all that can be in the polling place at once. So that logistically, you know, could be difficult as well. Matter of fact, we don't have to put up as many voting booths because we're not going to be able to have that many people in at one time. So the governor has done an order that, you know, we don't have to put up as many voting booths. So I just, I hope that, you know, folks think about these things as they decide when they're going to vote, how they're going to vote. We understand that some people want to, you know, do it in person and go to the polls, and we respect and we appreciate that. We would just would hope that they would think a little bit about the exposure, you know, to our staff and to themselves with potentially public facing, literally thousands of people. So we, we would just ask them to think about that as they make their decisions about November 3rd, so.
Deb, thanks for all that detail and overview. Really appreciate it. I know you guys will be working to, you know, keep all the information current on the website and on our social media platforms to try and keep folks informed. And I think we as counselors will do everything we can to help spread that word as well. Chris, I saw your hand go up. I just have one quick question as well. You referred, Deb, to some of the things you're still sort of waiting on from the governor and Secretary of State's office. Is one of those things, whether or not you'll be able to begin counting absentee ballots earlier than you typically are able to?
Oh, thank you. That was in the, in the governor's order that we can start a week before. Now, what that specific day is, is seven days. Is it the Tuesday? We're waiting to hear from that. But that is one thing that, as clerks, we submitted to the governor's office for consideration. So we will have a few days more to process those absentee ballots in advance. For us, you know, as always, it would be the challenge to have staffing to do that and then to still do our operations of getting ballots out to folks and receiving them and so forth. So yes, thank you for that. That was good news from the governor's office.
And then the point you just touched on about staffing, I know I've seen certainly more than I recall in any of the years I've lived here, interest from, you know, particularly friends and peers of mine expressing an interest in volunteering to assist or be a poll worker and all that kind of stuff. And so could you just, for the, for anybody that might be interested in that, what, what should they do?
They can certainly contact me. I will take their information. If we need additional staffing, we will contact them. We have already contacted a few new folks. Something that is interesting that most people don't know, which they wouldn't if they didn't know the details of election law, we have to have a balance of the political parties on election day. And right now in Cape Elizabeth, we have over 50% of registrants in one particular party. And so it will continue to be a challenge to keep a balance of political parties. So most of the people that are calling are in one, one party and not the other. So we will not be able to take everyone in that party because we do have to have that balance. But we, I encourage folks, you know, to contact me. They can certainly email me or call. I am literally keeping a list, jotting down what their interest is, and we will be calling some new folks, and we have already, you know, just trying to get things lined up. So be happy to take that information. So be happy to take that information. And you know, frankly, if if it if the schedule doesn't fit, so to speak, for this election, there's going to be more down the line. So I will be keeping that list.
Great. Councilor Straw, your question?
Yeah, I'll see if I can pull this all together. This can be a couple multifaceted components. Just as an aside, as you were mentioning restrictions on number of bodies in the polling place and whatnot. It I I realized, so I started trying to crunch the numbers in my head. It's a mathematical calculation as to the flow rate of voters you can have going through there. And that I can see how that could end up becoming a a problem. That said, I I thought you guys had a wonderful job dealing with COVID previously. And then to tie in Jamie's comment, which was going to be my primary question. I I know, like, the school district was having problems where they're sending out, they had been sending out pleas for substitutes and bus monitors and whatnot. And do you feel like your traditional poll workers, you have enough enough bodies signed up that have said, yeah, I'm good to go, I'm willing to be there during during the pandemic? So that you feel like you have enough staff? And then beyond staffing, do you feel like you have all the resources you need? Or and obviously, it's impossible to predict how this is all going to play out with COVID. But do you do you feel like you have what you need, or do you need more from from the town council?
Thank you, Councilor Straw, for that. I I can't tell you how good it feels to have the support of the council and the manager. You folks have always been very generous and understanding, and that really is true. And and not all my colleagues across the state can say that. I've never spent so much money in all my thirty-four-plus years that I have, literally, in the last few months. You know, and I believe we spent it wisely. I think we spent it on things that we need to. We, you know, have our PPE, the state has provided some, and frankly, we have supplemented it. Just in case their supply doesn't come in, I want to make sure we have it. You know, we've been ordering more voter cards. We've been doing, you know, above and beyond, just to make sure, you know, that we are covered. And and I know, and I think you folks and Matt certainly know, we're not going to spend it frivolously. And and but but I do feel confident that when we need something, if we need something, we are backed by the manager and the council. And again, not all my colleagues can say that. I mean, we understand budgets are tight. But it really is a good feeling to know that, you know, we have we have that support. So that really has helped through this, to be quite honest.
Any other questions for Deb comments before we look for a motion? All right. I I guess I have one quick question to, is this, so normally, don't we have to sign these?
Well, if you were here, but actually, the clerk can sign on behalf of the council. So I'd be happy to do so.
All right. So is there a motion from anyone to approve the municipal election warrant as presented?
So moved.
Councilwoman Penny Jordan, is her second? Councilwoman Deveraux, any further discussion? Seeing none. Can we have the roll call for the vote, please?
Councilwoman Deveraux?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabrielson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Great. Last item on tonight's agenda is item number one twenty-five dash two zero two zero. Discussion of the Ralph T. Gould Award. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? I see no hands raised. Is there anybody that would like to first bring bring up any discussion? I think Councilwoman Deveraux, you were the one that requested the addition of this item to the agenda. Go ahead.
I I would like to put forward Bob Malley. He's been with the town over forty-two years. I think that he is the epitome of this this award. So I would like to put forward his name.
Okay. I agree. That's a good suggestion.
We do double seconds? I'll I'll just ask if there, I don't know if anybody else had any other thoughts or other discussion or names put forward. I, you know, enthusiastically agree. So would anybody like to turn that into a motion? Or Matt, you want to add a comment?
Luckily, my screen just told me right after you did, so sorry about that. If I may, I notice we have a number of attendees from the public who are here. And the council, you know, the discussion is, can you have this conversation in exact session so it can be a surprise? So the only request I have is that you are here, if you could please just keep keep it under your hat until the formal presentation. I know it would be great to do that unless you want to let, you know, unless you want to be this, do provide a spoiler alert. But otherwise, it'd be great if if we could bring this as a surprise to Bob because I couldn't agree more with the council. You know, with Bob's Terms of Service, I think he meets meets and exceeds the definition of this award as, you know, as a friend, as well as an employee, and a dedicated person for the town, and just just an incredible legacy. So I hear hear on that. So thank you.
All right. Did we have, did we have a motion?
No, yeah.
Would somebody like to make a formal motion, please? Councilwoman Deveraux?
I so moved that we name Bob Malley as the recipient of the Ralph T. Gould Award for 2020.
Any discussion? All in favor, Deborah?
Councilwoman Deveraux?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabrielson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Straw?
One hundred percent yes.
And Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Are there any members remaining from the public that wish to speak on anything that was not on our agenda? Now's your opportunity. I see a hand raised from somebody listed as Pegasus. If you could give us your name and address once Matt opens up your microphone, you are, go ahead.
George Foley, Island Point Road, Cape Elizabeth. Was wondering, I may have missed it. I got on late. I didn't realize that the time. Have you guys talked about the Paper Streets issue at all?
We did discuss that as an earlier agenda item. The only action was just a more administrative one to refer to a workshop on the seventh.
On the seventh of October?
Yep, exactly. And we had one, one of your neighbors offered public comment, encouraging us to keep moving forward. So that was.
I would like that as well. I think it's a great thing, and we need to preserve it for for everyone. So. But thank you very much. That's all I had.
Yep. October 7th is the workshop date. John C., your hand is raised. Once Matt opens up your microphone, if you could just give us your name and address. Go ahead.
Yes, this is John Christie at Six Albion Road.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm 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 curious about the period of time available for in-person early voting. I I wasn't certain. I listened to the conversation, but it wasn't clear to me what was the the, when did that begin? And how long will that period be?
Okay. Deborah, do you have an answer to John's question?
We're not exactly sure the dates that the ballots will be available, but as soon as they are, probably what we'll do is post hours. Because again, we're still on lockdown here at Town Hall. I'm going to have to post somebody at the door. So there'll probably be a couple hours in the morning and a couple hours in the afternoon. But as we work out those details, we'll be sharing those, that information. Because there are municipalities all across the state in the same boat that we are. And that information was being presented to the governor's office. Whether or not we'll get any further guidance on that, I'm not sure. But that would be the plan now. Again, unless something changes from any guidance is to have posted hours for that. And we'll be posting that on the website in on the south side door here at Town Hall, which is the main entrance now to Town Hall for appointments. So.
Okay, so I I would just stress, we have extraordinary interest in this election. And we have concerns raised all around around absentee voting. And that.
So John, can I, yeah, if I could just jump in, I I appreciate your comments. I I, number one, I I recognize this is an important topic. The the purpose of this time is intended for things that weren't on the agenda. I don't know if you joined late, and if you did, I can recap quickly a little bit of what Deborah articulated, which, aside from the in-person early voting, there will be multiple ways, if you've requested an absentee ballot, to bring that back, whether that be by mail, whether it be a Dropbox that the town has ordered and will be installing, or even potentially, you know, calling the office and making an appointment to drop it off. So if if that's what you're raising concern about, I just wanted to bring up that Deb did already go over.
Yeah, I I thank you, Chairman, thank you, Chairman Gavin. I I did hear the conversation.
Yeah.
My concern is about in-person early voting, which we've always had for a period of about a month prior to the election. I think it can be safely done. Our our schools are safely open right now. And I think it can be safely done, and I would encourage the council, the the town council to to ensure that we have the maximum possible available time of early in-person voting that that is allowable by law.
Understood. I have a question, just in follow-up to that then, Deb. Is there any value, or has there been any looking into? I know that community services and the library are both using sort of different kind of reservation systems to for people to book times for the activities that go on, either at the school and in the pool or at the library. I just wonder, in the in the effort of managing traffic and managing headcount in the building, if that is something that is a possibility, or maybe not not realistic for that purpose. I'm not sure.
I.
And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
I I can't imagine trying to manage more phone lines than we already are in question.
This is the online, the, you know, how like for scheduling the curbside pickup of materials from the library or scheduling a slot to do the swimming?
No, I I I'm not familiar with that. I think posted hours during certain time from morning and afternoon will be the best way to do it. We did that in July, and it worked very well. And again, we can only have three, like, three voters in the building at one time. You know, I remain concerned about lined up traffic, you know, around the building here at Town Hall outside and limited parking and so forth. So but I can certainly, you know, talk to Matt, and I just, well, we'll certainly think about it. It's not not something that we had thought about, but I can certainly talk to Matt about it.
We and we did put, we did process a lot of people through the building this summer for the July election, and it seemed to work extremely well with the door person. So people, if they wanted to come up, they could come up, and they might have had to wait at times. But generally, if their intention was to come in and personally vote and process their absentee right there, or if they wanted to come and hand it to a live person versus putting it in the mail, that seemed to work extremely well also. So I thought that the the way that took place there, you know, we want everybody to vote who wants to vote, and we want to make it as easy as we can for them to vote. We just need to play within the rules of what the executive orders have laid out that we need to do. So we tried to be, and Deborah has tried to be extremely creative in trying to find ways to ensure that anybody who wants to participate can, and and we encourage that.
Great. Are there other members of the public that have, go ahead, Chris?
So just to to put a put a bow on this. So it sounds like then we have some proposal regarding in-person voting prior to Election Day. And the current status of it is that it's off now with the governor's office for approval. Is that? Is that what I I heard?
No, no, they can come and fill out an absentee ballot in in person here with booths that we have. It's just we are restricted on the volume of people who can come in to do that at one time.
So when is that opening up then? Has that already opened?
I don't have the ballots yet, so we'll be announcing it.
So we're we're gated on the ballots. Once the ballots come in, then then it'll be.
Then we'll, yeah, we'll post. And again, I just hope folks think about that and allow us to mail them a ballot. I hope that's their first choice, and they can, you know, walk it back, put it in the the ballot Dropbox. So, yeah.
All right, I want to go see if there's anything else besides this topic. Anybody else from public wanting to speak on anything that was not on tonight's agenda? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Council Gabrielson is her second.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Penny Jordan. Any discussion? Seeing none.
Councilwoman Deveraux?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabrielson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes. Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you all. Take care. Good night. Thank you.